We will now reconvene the special 2:00 p.m. meeting at 2:59 p.m., and they're being knoed for their business. We will adjourn that meeting at 2:59 p.m., and then we will open up and call to order the meeting of the Waco City Council on February 15th, 2022, to order at 3:00 p.m. Before you join me for a moment of silence, I do want to point out, we don't always catch these, we try to, but we don't always, but it is Chief Summers' birthday today, our Fire Chief's birthday, so if you see him, wish him a happy birthday.[31.11][31.11](APPLAUSE). I know that we have a lot of city employees and partners that are frequently at these meetings, and we don't always catch people's birthday, but when we do, we want to be sure to celebrate. So, happy birthday, Chief. And now, please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the City Secretary, staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium, to provide registration and information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one, seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and reconvene the work session with the report of our City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. I did, unfortunately, we missed one birthday announcement, and so, following your lead here, I did want to say happy belated birthday to Ashley Neistrom, our Chief of Staff, whose birthday was last week.
There you go.
And so, she'd love a round of applause, because she's She's always looking for an opportunity to grab a microphone and get in the limelight, so I thought I'd take advantage of that. Thanks for doing that, and happy birthday, Chief. Always a pleasure to see you in the crowd. Mayor and Council, welcome today. We have one change to the agenda, and it relates to Resolution 2022-099. We received an update this afternoon that the developer pursuing the tax credits on La Salle will no longer be pursuing that opportunity in this cycle, so we're asking you to pull that item, and I believe Ranisha Hudn will cover that later in the work session as well. In terms of employee recognition and organizational updates, I don't have any today. Informal reports, though, we have two. First is our informal report 075, which is a report on the Waco Police Department's racial profiling report for 2021. And then, our second informal report is 2022-076, which is an update on the status of the city's general obligation refunding bonds, as well as our combination tax and revenue certificates obligation, and our refunding series. This morning, I was able to join a variety of calls to confirm our rate structure for each of these issuances, and just wanted to provide some color commentary to those calls, as well as the ratings calls that we had in the weeks leading up to this debt sale. I'm pleased to report that each one of the, each one of the three series, the rates are close to our anticipated amounts. The true interest cost on the largest series, which is $103 million of debt issuances, the true interest cost was 2.64%. That's about 10 basis points above what we anticipated at our last update of the council. We also saw 3.04% true interest cost on the taxable series, and 1.9% on the $25 million in refunding series. That refunding series will result in a net present value savings of more than $2 million over the prior terms. I thought it would be helpful, you know, every time we go out and issue debt, the ratings agencies review our financials, they review our management practices, and they review our economy, and I thought it might be helpful, Ashley, if you don't mind pulling up that slide, to really show the impact of that work, and show the impact of what the council's fiduciary responsibilities produces. And what you're seeing here is a graph that shows we're AA-plus rated. This is a graph that shows if we were not that highly rated, what the cost would be every year in additional debt services to do the same projects that we're issuing on the $103 million. And the cumulative impact of a AA-plus rating to us versus a triple B rating, for instance, over the term of the debt is $5 million. So, your staff and your management and the growing economy is producing very tangible results for our rate payers and our constituents. And so, I just thought it might be a good chance for us to say thanks to the team that really works this really hard. That's our financial team, for sure, Janice Andrews, and Nick Sarpy, and Paul Kane, and a lot of others that really work hard, the legal team as well, to produce a debt sale that creates a lot of value for our residents.
Holmes here, I'll just make a comment that that's great execution. So, yeah, Janice and Paul and Nick, great job in pulling that together. And in the face of, just in the last couple of weeks, we had a little bit of a rising interest rate environment kind of taking hold, so for us to get that kind of execution, I think is a great reflection on the city management who's been processing this bond process for the last few months, or managing the bond process for the last few months. Also, the, I was happy to see since our last meeting that we were confirmed on our bond, or our ratings, the AA1 with Moody's and the AA+ with S&amp;P. That is fantastic. As you say, it makes all the difference in the world in getting great execution on your bond process. So, yeah, great job, and it's a good time to lock these in, and this thing closes when then? We price today and close at the end of the month?
Where's Janice? When do we close?
We should have money in March.
Okay, see, yeah, it's on page 83, March 15th, plan closing day. Got it, thanks.
One thing that's important to note that I've missed in my highlight is, you mentioned the ratings by Moody and S&amp;P. That is, that means we're one notch below AAA status, and both ratings agencies did provide us very positive feedback in terms of our fund balance is strong, our economy is strong, and so, I think, you know, over the next few years, it wouldn't shock me for us, if we keep our current path we're on, to see an upgrade to each of the ratings and agencies' highest level, which would certainly be a feather in our cap.
Well, I just want to note, too, that I know that staff has worked really diligently to work with the rating agencies to make sure that all of the facts of our community are being presented accurately, but also in a way that accurately represents why we deserve that better status. And I think that, I appreciate the intentionality in bringing clarity to the situation that I think is going to result in that better status. It's because of, it's not only because of the policies we adopted, but also working hand-in-hand with those rating agencies to make sure that they really understand what's happening in our economy. And so, with that intentionality, I think that our taxpayers are going to see significant benefit. So, thank you to our city staff for the intentionality with how you approach this subject matter. I know that that's going to result in benefit to our taxpayer and tax base.
City Manager Ford, before we move on, I do have some questions about the informal report on racial profiling, and I'm wondering if it would be possible to ask some questions of Chief Victorians, since I see her in the audience with us?
Chief, you want to come up to the podium? Hi, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Chief, thanks for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
I was, in reading over this report, I was thinking about how you've almost been with us for a year, and I had the pleasure of sitting in on one of now Chief Victorians' interviews with us, and so, I pulled up some notes of things that you had said, and wanted to help just have these be a part of the conversation. So, something that really drew me to you in the interview was your ability to hold so much complexity and nuance, and that was really striking when you were reflecting on your experience after the murder of George Floyd, and talking about both your experience as someone that wears the badge, and as a black woman, and some of those tensions. You said things like, "We recognize that inequities exist systemically in policing. We acknowledge it, we need to name it and see where they exist, and then move on." And then, you named your, some of your guiding values being transparency and accountability and trust, and those pieces just instilled so much trust in me that you were the right person for this moment. So, when I look through this document, there are things that I see that are both hopeful and kind of sound light alarms for me. Former Chief Holt and Assistant City Manager and I had a robust conversation today in an agenda review from my perspective as a licensed social worker that's taught on systemic racism and how that's played out, and then his role as a former police, chief of police that cares deeply about racial inequities. So, a couple of things that came up for me was, I wonder if it would be in future years, if we could see year-over-year comparisons to know how arrest rates and search rates compare across racial groups each year. I'd also be curious to know, from your perspective as chief, in reading this, what specific action steps you might suggest for us? On page 37 of our agenda packet, it has Tier Two motor vehicle-related contact analysis, and I recognize there's some data here, but there are pieces that are also opaque. What I see in reading this paragraph, I'll read it for the benefit of the group, but it says, "Regarding searches and arrests, the data showed that most searches took place among black residents. When considering all searches, most were consented by black residents, while most custody arrests were also black residents. Overall, most searches did not result in contraband. Of those that produced contraband, most were of black residents. This was followed by whites. Of the search that did not produce contraband, most were of black residents. Most arrests were of black residents." And so, it feels like every sixth or seventh word is "black," and so, that feels disproportionate to me, considering the percentage of our residents that are black residents. So, some of the narrative says, hey, we didn't get any complaints, that's a win, and that's a win that I'm celebrating. When I'm having conversations with my overwhelmingly black and brown constituents, I hear stories of high trust in Waco PD, and I also hear stories of apprehension and some fear, and I think some of that is rooted in this larger national conversation we're having about policing. I'm wrapping all this up, but because of your commitment to transparency and accountability and trust, I'm wondering what we do with this document, and how we be better, and how we continue to build trust, particularly among communities of color that have had so much trauma invoked in them in the last couple of years.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. I think on the surface, when you read this, the Tier Two motor vehicle-related contact analysis, it appears there are some, that there are disparities, and then, if you, we need to consider the whole context of this report, and then, not just this, it's not just an issue with police and responding and picking and pulling over people on traffic. These are socioeconomic issues, educational issues, opportunity issues, our minority members of our community living in the places where there are high incidence of crime, and so, most of our resources are in those areas, and so, our contacts are going to be there, right? So, I think that in the future, and I talked about this with Ryan already, that maybe we need to break down some other numbers that will actually maybe give you a better picture of what this really looks like. I know that his overall findings, and I'm appreciative of that, that it's along national standards with everyone else, and I understand not wanting to be like everybody else, but what can we do differently to make sure that these numbers perhaps stand out? And eventually, that would be a goal for me, to do that, but there are some other things that we need to change as well for these contacts to actually go down, for this number of searches to go down in our communities that are well beyond police.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful, and I think some of the conversations that ACM Holt and I were having was that these are multi-system issues, the way that law enforcement results with the criminal justice system, and I think as a council member sitting up here, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we take incredibly high level of responsibility in the things that we can control? And for me, part of what would be helpful is just having some more terms defined. There's talk about contraband. I'd be curious what constitutes contraband, especially thinking about guns in a state where guns are incredibly deregulated. There's lots of talk about warrants. I'd be curious, what percentages of these are we arresting felony warrants versus an outstanding traffic warrant that potentially someone chose not to pay or couldn't pay? But knowing that you're still wrapping up the tail end of your first year, and you've done a phenomenal job representing us, and I imagine you will continue to, I think just having a few more of these data points could be helpful for us.
And I've already discussed, Ryan discussed with me just before we got here, maybe I can do a chief's report after this report, and that's what we'll work on for next time.
That'd be amazing. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions for Chief? Just be sure. Thank you, Chief. Chief, thank you so much for your work to ensure that, you're working to build a community that has a trust with your team and our community, and also, at the same time, making sure our city is safe. And thank you to Ryan Holt and the chiefs that came before that have also worked towards that mutual goal as well. So, thank you for being with us today, Chief, and look forward to getting that more data and report from you in the future. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions on any of the two informal reports? All right.
Question wise, we have four on the agenda today, and those will be covered later by Clint Peters, the Director of Development Services in the work session. Resolutions, I wanted to highlight three of the 30 this afternoon, the first being Resolution 22-086, which is the appointment of our new City Secretary, Michelle Hicks. Michelle Hicks will be joining us at the 6 o'clock business session, and I look forward to the council being able to recognize and welcome her at that time, and I think we'll also have a short break for a welcoming photo.
That's great.
So, looking forward to that. I know the council is
Do we need to pull that agenda item to be able to?
Yes, let's please do that. Pull it off consent, that'd be great. The second resolution is not as fun, but is also important, is Resolution 2022-111. As the council and the public are aware, the City of Waco has submitted an application with TCQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for a new landfill near Highway 31 and FM 939. The TCQ Executive Director recently completed the technical review of this application and prepared a draft permit, which indicates the director's preliminary decision that this permit, if issued, meets all statutory and regulatory requirements. And the item on your agenda today seeks to add plumber and associates as a team member in getting that landfill developed. The property's stormwater flows into what's called Horse Creek Tributary and into the western arm of the Natural Resources Conservation Site Reservoir 19, which is located near the border of Limestone Hill and McLennan Counties. And to ensure the public has clear information on any impacts to surface water in that area, the city is retaining the services of plumber and associates, and they're going to conduct a water quality and sediment quality baseline study to quantify the impacts and conditions on Reservoir 19, and look at it prior to constructing the landfill and operating the proposed landfill. In addition to the substantial investment in land and engineering and the application development for this landfill, this study really demonstrates the city's dedication to preserving and maintaining the environment surrounding the new landfill site, and taking the steps necessary to mitigate any impacts on local watersheds.
Bradley, I just want to say, I know that this is an incredibly complex matter that our staff has been attending to with great amount of time and resources. It's incredibly important that we have a regional landfill that not only our city and our citizens can utilize, but the region at large can take advantage of, and I appreciate staff's commitment to getting it over the finish line and completed, but also doing so in a really thoughtful way, in a way that protects the environment and is thoughtful in regards to neighboring property owners. I think that this is an incredibly thoughtful location, remote, and that doesn't mean that those who do reside nearby won't have impact, and I think the thoughtfulness surrounding our approach to that and the environment around there is really important. So, thank you for your staff's dedication to that and pulling in the right team to be really thoughtful and comprehensive around the environmental impacts to this matter.
Our last highlight is Resolution 22-114, which authorizes the purchase of 628, a little over 628 acres located at 646 FM 2114 Clifton, Texas. And you might say, what in the world is the City of Waco doing, purchasing 628 acres out in Clifton, Texas? And I'll tell you more about it. We're also, along with this real estate purchase, we're purchasing 2,153 acre feet of water rights per year in the Brazos River. That equates to about 710 million gallons of water. Ashley, we have a map of that? I think we do. So, up on your top left, you see where Smith Bend is in the orange, there you go, thank you. So, it is quite a ways out, but as the council's well familiar, and the public probably needs to be familiar, water rights in Texas, they're not making any more of them. And so, as we plan for the engine of the economy to keep growing and going over the next generation or two, we need water to support it, and so, we're excited to put this resolution in front of the council. For context of how much water this is, I mentioned it's 2,153 acre feet, or more than 700 million gallons of water. The average daily use in Waco of water is about 41 million gallons at the current moment, meaning this purchase could supply 17 days' worth of water over the course of a year. That's how much water we're talking about, or looked at another way, that's enough to supply 7,200 new homes with water. Significant. Or, if you've been watching the Olympics lately, you know, they've had trouble with snow in China, the Winter Olympics, have you all seen this? Yeah, it's recently snowed, I understand, but they used more than 350 million gallons of water to create artificial snow to put on the Olympics this year, and so, this would supply two times that.
Olympics.
If we wanted to ever host the Winter Olympics
The Winter Olympics in Waco, yep.
Where's Mike from the Sports Commission? I don't know if he's here or not, but I'll get him a note. Purchase price on the property is $4.3 million, and this transaction has just a, I know we're laughing and having brevity, but just to be clear, we're getting both the land and the water rights in this transaction, and if we were simply to compare the purchase price to the cost to increase the storage capacity at Lake Waco, for instance, by a similar amount of water, this transaction would be significantly less on a per acre foot basis, representing a high value to the water fund and our future water planning.
This is great. I think that we try to operate, I know in City Hall and this council with our 30, 70, 100-year goggles on, and the decisions we're making, and ensuring that we have access to water for the growth that we're experiencing, and a high volume, or sorry, in a high-value way is exactly what we should be doing. So, I look forward to procuring these water rights. Bradley, a question is, if we, are we able to, if we wanted to, and I'm not saying we would, but if we wanted to purchase this property and secure the water rights, and then sell the real estate, is that something that we could do? And should we want to do that? I mean, to me, that's another value add from, we're buying the land and the water rights.
Yes, yes. The staff will be evaluating the method by which we could think about the future use of the real estate, including one of the options being a future sale, at which time we'd still retain the water rights, obviously. That's the value to us of this particular transaction.
Great. Thanks for the forward-thinking aspect of this transaction to our staff.
Ordinance wise
Oh, sorry. Quick question. On the housing tax credits, you say we pulled, one has been pulled, is that right?
Yes, sir, the one on La Salle and on
97, 98, 99.
Somebody correct me if that's wrong, but it's the one on La Salle, I won't get into it. 99, yes, sir.
And then, as we approve, or as we consider for approval, 97 and 98, we are approving the process, or voice of support. We're not necessarily approving any land use changes or zoning changes that may have to take place in the process. Is that correct?
That's a fair way to say it, and Ranisha's going to give us an overview here in a minute that speaks to a little more detail of each site's zoning, and also more descriptive of the process, but I think that's a fair way to describe it.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay. Ordinance wise, we have three on the agenda today, and they're all second readings, and there's no further questions. That concludes my report.
City Manager Ford, I just want to, in terms of employee recognition, I wanted to thank both Director of Development Services, Clint Peters, and Senior Assistant City Attorney Kathleen Pradon for their great work this weekend at the People's Law School, which the city has helped promote at Baylor Law, which is an education for the public on a series of topics, and we were able to co-present on City Government 101, and they did an amazing job with that, so I wanted to thank both of them publicly, and of course, it goes without saying, this whole council is grateful for Parks Director Jonathan Cook's amazing work, both wrapping and promoting the polar plunge for the Special Olympics, which I thought was a special commendation there.
That was the best thing I've seen all week.
He's just lucky that I didn't remember to put that in my slide, because that was quite
Oh, just add it later when we need to pick me up.
If you need to pick me up, play that. He should have been on the Super Bowl halftime show.
That made
That's all I've got. Thanks, Councilmember Boarder, for those comments.
The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022-86 through 2022-115, except for 86, which will be voted on separately, as well as Resolutions 109 and 113, in which council members boarder root and Palmer disqualified, and 99, which has been pulled from the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. All right. The next item on the agenda are the work session items, 77 and 80. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Work session 077, excited for the team to come on up, and we'll have a discussion of our annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ending on September 30th, 2021. Mayor and council, we're glad to have Katie King here at the table from JRBT, as well as Janice Andrews, who you're well familiar with, and I see Diana Ward out in the audience as well, who's served our community for a long time. They're going to be providing an overview of the ACFR, and I'll say that each year, you know, we talk about the audit, and we talk about, the audit kind of has this negative connotation, but I know that our team and the team from JRBT enjoy working together because we get to, we get to look at things and find things and try and improve things, and fortunately, we've got a great team that's really led us, and Janice, and Rusty, and the rest of the team in finance. So, we really enjoy this, working on it. It helps to evaluate how we're managing the business of the city, and as the council's well familiar, it's a highly complex environment with a lot of different business units, so would like Katie to, Katie, are you going to do the intro and do the whole presentation?
Okay.
Nothing from Janice? You're just going to wave at us and say
I am.
Adios. Sunset. Well, thanks, Janice, for your work on this one. I know it's nice to go out with a good audit, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Katie, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for having me today. We're going to go relatively briefly through this. I know we spent some time through Budget Audit Committee going in more detail, so I'm just going to hit some high points and do this kind of high level, and take any questions you may have at the end. But we are here this afternoon to present the final results from the city's 2021 audits. We'll cover some scope and results, select few financial observations, and then conclusions over internal control and compliance. As a reminder, this is your list of opinion units. When we issue our opinion, we name the different groups that we have issued opinions on, and so, you've got the governmental and the business-type activities on the city as a whole. We have each major fund, which for the City of Waco is the general fund, the water, wastewater, solid waste funds, and then everything else is a separate opinion unit, all aggregated together. With respect to the audit, management has responsibilities, as well as the auditors, and the management responsibilities include preparing the financial statements and selecting those accounting policies and procedures that are followed throughout the year. We then conduct our audit in accordance with both generally accepted auditing standards and the government auditing standards. Through those audit procedures, we obtain reasonable assurance that financials are free of material misstatement. We do that through examining various supporting documentation, corroborating with members of management, of the council, of others within the organization. We look at accounting principles that are used, estimates and assumptions that are used by management in generating those estimates, and then the overall presentation and disclosures within the annual comprehensive financial report. Through those procedures, we were able to issue an unmodified or Through those procedures, we were able to issue an unmodified or clean opinion that the financials of the city of Waco were presented fairly as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2021. With respect to compliance, management also has responsibilities to ensure that the city complies with all laws and regulations that it is under. We then design procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that any noncompliance that would have a direct or material effect on major federal and state programs would be identified. And we do that, again, through examination of documentation, granting agreements, conversations with city management, et cetera. As a result of those procedures, we were also able to issue a clean or unmodified opinion related to the city's compliance with the direct and material requirements of their federal and state programs. I haven't listed those there, but we've talked about those in depth in previous meetings. In terms of financial results, just a couple of highlights. On overall net position for the city, you've got a chart that shows the last five years of the split between the governmental and business type activities and those relative net positions. You can see there's been a consistent increase in both of those over the past five years. For the current year, governmental activities increased about $45 million to an ending total of $399 million. And the business type activities increased about $42 million to an ending balance of $422 million for the year. Specific to the general fund, there was an increase of about $700,000 from just under, just over, excuse me, $92 million to just under $93 million for the year. You can see, again, that's a pretty steady increase at kind of a slight flat chart for this year, but still an increase nonetheless of about the $700,000. That actual fund balance, you can see here broken down into your various fund balance categories. You'll see the increase there from the $92.1 to $92.8 million for 2021. Overall, the categories are fairly consistent. The one change you'll notice that you're well familiar with is movement of management and council away from as many assignments into the unassigned category on fund balance. So that is kind of the flip that you see between those two, but overall, an increase for the year. The city policy is that you maintain a 28% ratio between your unassigned fund balance and the next year's budgeted revenues. Last year, you ended at a 33% ratio. This year, it was up to just under 40%. And again, that increase is driven by the movement out of unassigned and into the unassigned category for the general fund. In terms of your budget to actual year-over-year, you can see that $700,000 increase was in comparison to a budgeted deficit of $21 million. That increase is a function of increase in revenues and decrease in expenditures. Obviously, the city is very conservative in their estimates of budgeted revenues. And so with the activity in the city of Waco this year with sales and property tax increases, you saw an increase of actual revenues over budget. And then the expenditure decreases are really a function of the time and the occurrence of the expenditures, when you budgeted versus when they actually took place. The other transfers have been consistent, and so you had that net increase at the net change in fund balance. The ratio for the city of working capital to revenues has a goal of 30% each year. You can see for 2021, we continue to increase those ratios year-over-year. As a note, these percentages are based strictly on the financial statement values. Management does maintain separate ratios that are more conservative, that exclude cash that's earmarked for construction and process amounts. So those are maintained separately. These are straight off the financial statements. But again, you can see increases and well within the council-approved minimums of 30%. Overall, in terms of final conclusions on internal controls and compliance, we had no findings to report related to material weaknesses in internal control and financial reporting, no findings related to internal controls on major federal and state award programs, and there were no instances of material noncompliance with any of those direct and material compliance requirements in the single audit, major federal or state programs. So that concludes our remarks. And again, thank you for the opportunity to serve the city over the 2021 fiscal year.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just comment, Katie, great job and appreciate JRBT helping us out here. Music to CFO's ears, unmodified opinion with no material weaknesses. Am I right, Janice? Anyway, thanks also to Janice and Rusty for kind of organizing the audit process. It validates the city's people and processes and procedures that we have in place for an auditor to come in with this kind of a great, great report. And it also fits in, a good audit really helps our bond rating too, which we saw in an earlier presentation, that great execution comes from having a great audit. So, and then, and I've talked about the performance of the city, of the financials themselves before, but just strong operational performance, strong working capital position, very strong equity, we're in great shape in our reserves, and strong unassigned balance, and things are looking good from a financial perspective here. So thanks to, thanks for auditing this great procedure, and thanks to JRBT, thanks for the accounting group for managing this. Good job, Bradley and team.
Glad to support it. And Nick's got his work cut out for him. Is he in here? Nick, man, I don't know how you're going to beat this next year. But Janice, thank you, as always.
If I might just say a few words.
Please.
I did want to thank JRBT for the professional and thorough manner that they conduct the audit each year. They really, really put us through the ringer in providing a lot of information to them. And we really do appreciate it because we feel really good to have an audit and have our work reviewed. I want to thank the council and management for their support in the audit. We couldn't do it without your support. The finance staff is wonderful. This is a marathon effort for us every year, and we just couldn't do it without everyone's help in the department. Appreciate it so much. And it's not only affects us, but it's the whole city. The auditors visit with many of the departments, and they have to provide a lot of information. As you noted in earlier discussions, we did a number of grants this year, and that takes a lot of detail work by the auditors and by the departments to provide that information. So I just wanted to express my appreciation. It takes the whole city to make this be a success, and so we really do appreciate everyone's help.
Thank you, Janice. And thank you, Katie. I think that from a, you know, one of the things we want to do is make sure that the public has trust in what we're doing. And having a third party come in and really dig deep into our financials, who has no interest in, in, you know, anything other than making sure that everything is accurate, is so helpful, not only to us and to this council, but also our public. So thank you, Katie, and thank you, Janice, for all that you do. We really appreciate this report.
All right, Mayor. Thank you, council. Our next work session, I think we have like a whole bus full of people. We'll have them come on down. Work session 078, discussion of the development and funding of an industrial training center here in Waco. Mayor, I'm pleased to welcome this contingent today. It's, it's got members from TSTC staff, including Jeff Kilgore and Adam Barber, as well as industry representatives, Rick Tallis and Hal Whitaker. So they figure out who all's going to sit where. Supposed to be an alphabetical order, guys.
Bradley, it is my birthday.
Happy birthday to Hal. This is Hal, it's his birthday, Hal Whitaker. No, we've got a great group, including Curtis Cleveland, as well as somebody that's a familiar face, Chris Collins from the Greater Waco Chamber. We've got a great team here to discuss the development of an industrial training center. And this center, certainly we'd be laser-focused on providing skills training to support the regions existing, as well as future workforce needs. I've had the pleasure of sitting in a few of their planning meetings over the last few months, and certainly feel like they're trending towards a very positive improvement in Waco that ties directly into the council's goal of, strategic goal of economic development. The only other thing I'll say is I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment and recognize Curtis Cleveland, who's a Waco native, but he's so unassuming at times, you may not realize. He's the Chair of the Board of Regents at TSTC. And that's a big deal for Waco, and it's a big deal for this project. So I just wanted to make sure we started with that and acknowledge him for that work and appreciate him for that work. So at this point, I'll turn it over. Jeff, if you want to take the mic and?
Thank you, Bradley. Appreciate you taking away my warm-up picture with Curtis.
That's awkward. Sorry about that.
Appreciate you being here, boss. I do want to congratulate Janice and Katie and JRBT and your staff. It's always a positive thing to hear a great audit report, and especially if you're going to follow the audit report, you want it to be positive. So thanks, everybody, for that. You've got a great team. This is kind of a, we wanted to make sure we were in a one-on-one state here and not a weak zone, so we brought as many, much help as we could. As Bradley said, this is not just a TSTC effort. We were invited in by the industry of Waco that serves each of you as a willing partner. So this is going to be a little more like a panel presentation slash discussion. It might be a little choppy today, but I wanted you to make sure that you knew that this has been driven by Hal and, and y'all know Hal Whitaker, and Rick Tallis with Capstone Mechanical. Also, I think a second past president of the Chamber of Commerce, getting older every day, something like that. And of course, Curtis in his Central Texas Iron Works hat, myself, Adam Barber, who is our Head of Local Workforce Training, and actually the leader of the whole show, as I would expect, Chris Collins. So we, Chris is really co-piloting this, as we go out here today, so thank you, Chris, Chris for being here. Place more Texans than great-paying jobs is TSTC's mantra, and that's what we do statewide. And that's why we're excited to be part of this discussion and part of this task force. And so that's really what we want to set the expectation about today. And visiting with the mayor earlier, he said, you know, let's talk about the ROI right away. And so we wanted to put that on the front page of the introduction, the presentation. And this is actually what we're talking about for the community of Texas. The outcomes, the critical outcomes will obviously be a skilled workforce pipeline, which we'll talk more about, higher wages for the underemployed, or upskilling, as we call that. And then the most important piece of it is the pathways out of poverty for the unemployed. And not just the unemployed who show up in the roles on those workforce reports, but those that are actually out of the workforce and on the sidelines that don't even show up in some of the numbers that we'll show. So it's a great combined effort. What we're going to do here today, I'm an old teacher, and so I like to say, this is what we're going to do in the lesson plan here. You know, we're going to talk a little bit about the problem. We're going to talk about it from a statewide perspective. We're going to bring it home to Waco. Chris in the chamber is going to help me do that. We're going to talk a little bit about the effort and the discussions that these gentlemen have been leading for several months, trying to get Waco and Central Texas out in front of this issue. And we're going to present a solution that is becoming a statewide solution, and then we're going to explain to you how we need your help. And then we're going to end back up where we started here today. Your help is going to help us to deliver these critical outcomes to the citizens of Texas and to the employers of Texas. You better folks on the panel, y'all, y'all recognize pro ecclesia, pro taxana, right? In my 20 years at Beto, I had to learn that. But I also grew up in South Waco, or pro civicus and pro taxana is important. So this is for the citizens, it's for the employers, it's for the state. So we hope to present that and then field as many questions as we can. Let's talk a little bit about statewide. Many of you are familiar that there is a workforce crisis even prior to the pandemic that is hitting our nation and even the great state of Texas and even the great community of Waco. From a statewide perspective, there were a little over a million job postings in December of 2021. Now, that began to creep up even prior to the impact of the pandemic. This is not a pandemic issue. This has been, been happening since 2000, in the late, or 2015 on. The baby boomers are retiring now. We have not been intentional about debilding that pipeline of skilled workforce. The economy has changed, the jobs have changed, the skill requirements have changed, and so we are, we are in an imbalance in our economy. And obviously, you can see there's 717,000 unemployed Texans, and that does not include those that do not show up in the unemployed list through statistical research. What we want to zone in on here today is the middle skills gap, and that's what's really the issue surrounding when you're looking at supplying heavy industrial workforce. We do a pretty good job with four-year education, balancing what are the needs in the workforce that require a four-year degree. And we have a pretty nice supply of the types of high school education and trades and skills to meet that workforce need. But where the imbalance has continued to grow, as you can see, this is from the National Skills Coalition from 2018, is in the middle skills, and that's the technical skills. That's plumbing, that's trades, that's IT, that's instrumentation, robotics. That's where the big deficit is growing. That is referred to as the skills gap in our country. This is another illumination of the importance of that middle skills. It's not only the one where we have a gap, but it actually comprises over half the needs of the labor market. So we have a gap in the most critical need of all the jobs combined. And so that's what we're working from a statewide agency perspective of helping communities solve that problems and the employers of Texas. And so what we want to do today is bring that, that issue right here to our backyards. And so at this time, I'll pitch over to Chris. Chris and Rick in the chamber has done some research here locally, which kind of led to the invitation of TSTC to this process. Chris?
Jeff, I think everyone realizes the economic success that we've had over the last few years. I was looking at some numbers today. Since 2019, we've attracted 26 new businesses into the community or had expansions by existing businesses. And the result of that has been a significant number of new jobs that have been announced, direct jobs and indirect jobs that come in, that will be coming into our marketplace. When you look at that, we're looking at about 5,000 new jobs between those direct and indirect jobs, and half of those are going to require advanced skills. So not necessarily a two-year degree or a four-year degree, but beyond high school-level education. And so that's where this training center and this idea comes into play. But when we look at the pipeline of an industry, looking at this market as well, you know, you're looking at at least 2,000 more jobs that are looking to locate or expand in our market too. So it means that we not only have an immediate need, but we have an ongoing pipeline need as well.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, too. From, from an employer standpoint, I mean, we're, we're trying to grow. You guys have done some stuff to help Capstone grow recently, and, and we're struggling. I did a little bit of analysis, real quick, looking year-over-year at our wage increases, and I think that that is a good indicator of what's going on in the market as far as it being hard to find people. So we had a 9% increase in what we were paying our field guys this time, from January of last year to January of this year. 9% increase. I mean, I think nationwide, it's about a 5% increase is what I read the other day. So it's been strong across the country. That's anecdotal, right? We don't know if that's happening in every company in Waco, but I think that that shows you the competition out there for what little workforce we have.
No question. Any more validation from our industry folks on the panel? I always like trust but verify our numbers.
Well, I think, I think from the standpoint of the overall group that we deal with through our area industry managers group is, I will tell you, in the meetings we've had over the last year, this has been a significant issue in that everyone has looked at those same kind of increases throughout, throughout their companies too. So that validation is there.
The thing I want to emphasize to each councilperson here today is that we're here representing both the existing industry and the new industry that Chris and her team have done such a great job attracting. Existing industry in Waco is healthy. It's growing. We're all looking for new employees, and this project is going to be helping existing industry as well as filling the new jobs that Chris has done such a great job recruiting with your help and the county commissioners.
Something else I'd throw into this, you know, probably 10 years ago is when we started talking about what eventually became Gwama, something I think this community is really proud of, a collaborative effort to provide a pathway for high school students to get real training so they can get real jobs right out of high school or go on to TSTC or into industry. And it's been a great success. Many of us sit on that advisory board, executive advisory board for that as well. In relationship to the problem or the challenge we have in front of us, the number of jobs that are already in the marketplace and coming, Gwama, on a good year, will graduate about 150 kids. And with pandemic stuff this last year, it's down from there. It's probably closer to 100. It's a drop in the bucket from what we need as a community to fill these jobs. It's a great program, you know, and so that's really what got part of, got us thinking and discussing, how can we scale this up? How can we go beyond just our high school students, but into other parts of the workforce to do the upskilling? So just to give you a little bit of clarity there. And I'll say, the world, a lot of, a lot of communities in Texas recognized how, what a good program Gwama is, and many have replicated it and actually gone beyond it and have innovated past what, where we were or are. So a little bit of this is just, is responding to the. So a little bit of this is responding to the, to the market that we're competing in, in Texas with other communities as well.
Thank you, Rick. That's a, that's a great segue. The next couple of slides are information that we also received from Chris and her teams, the labor force trends.
Yeah, labor force continuing to grow for us. And we're seeing that labor force number accelerate. Typically, we'd been somewhere around 1.5% to 2% on annual labor force growth. But we're seeing that move at a much faster pace. I was looking at the 2021 numbers and we were over 4% labor force growth just in between 2020 and 2021. So we know that that, those numbers are growing. This is an area that's attractive to people to relocate into. And we're continuing to graduate people that are staying here, both from a, from a public education perspective and also from a higher education perspective. So all the things that we want to do are starting to happen. But we're not, we still have more jobs available at the moment than enough people to fill. So that's the gap.
Thank you, Chris. And the next slide validates that there is good news that the population is continuing to grow. It's just not keeping pace with the labor market needs. Rick segued into this, and I mentioned earlier, this is a statewide crisis. It's a national crisis. There are not enough skilled workers for the jobs of the Texas economy and our local economy. Communities around the state have been awakening to this, and they've been reinvesting in technical education. The Capitol in Austin has been responding to initiatives to stimulate technical education. Some communities have been taking it upon themselves to begin trying to at least address and get ahead of the wave that's coming. This is, this is still the tip of the iceberg. This is not something that's going to begin to solve unless there's intentionality. Communities around the state, Bear County, every, in each community, when they either ask us or someone else, they're custom building, and that's what we're talking about here today, not some cookie cutter program. It's custom built to the needs of the employers and the citizens' needs in Central Texas. And it ranges from Bear County is a 30,000 square, very tightly focused industrial technology training center, what we're talking about here to begin with, all the way in Allen. This is a 303,000 square foot comprehensive training campus that has a workforce training center, dual credit, other things. And so there's a full range out there. And it's not just far away, it's close to home. Temple just recently passed a $200 million plus bond, which will include a career and technical education center, such as the one we're discussing today. So there's, the point is, there's going to be competition, competition close to home for a skilled workforce to fill the economies and the employers in those local regions. We do have experienced communities calling upon us and say, look, we'll, we'll build it if you come. It's kind of the, kind of the deal. And those also range everywhere from recently in Abilene, which is a 50,000 to 60,000 square foot training center, all the way to Fort Bend, which actually has grown into a three facility campus. We go and ask the community what it is they're actually looking for. We crosswalk what their demands and needs are, and we can build a buffet of response mechanisms. And so that's a little bit what's going on statewide. That's some of the, some of the, the numbers and data inside the problem that exists in Central Texas. And it's not going to, it's not going to ease unless we're intentional about it. And so luckily, you have community leaders led by these gentlemen up here in front that are in front of this and have been for a while. And they began a discussion even prior to TSTC being asked to be involved. So I'm going to ask one of those, those individuals to talk about where this started. And you already kind of began to allude to that, Rick, but if I'd like to pick this part of it up.
As we began to understand, I mean, not only our needs individually as companies, but seeing the greater community need as we saw the success of economic development in our, in our area. And like I said, saw the, the, the systems we had in place through Guam and even through people that, students that matriculate out of TSTC into Waco, it's not a high number. It's not as high as we need it to be. And so that's what started this thought. A lot of times, I also get the opportunity to be a, sit on the board of trustees at Midway. And in the education world, oftentimes, we see the customer is the student. And it should be in a lot of those cases, right? The student is the focus of what's going on. I would, I would throw out there for this type of education, the customer is the employer. You know, we need to get the students closer to those employers, get them engaged. Let them be right there where the employers are. And so that's what the, when you think about where TSTC is in our community, it's, it was in an area of opportunity, it was built in an old air force base, where we really need it at the heart of where the employers are. If we want to get more of those students to stay here and get connected with employers. So that, that was where the thought was, hey, let's put this satellite building in the middle of the industrial park. So that leads to other questions. Well, that might not be where the students who need this training are located. Because really, there's no, there aren't any residential areas in the middle of the industrial park. But I think as we've discussed things with Bradley and other, others in the community, I think it provides a great opportunity to solve two problems at one time. The transportation challenge, right? If we can figure out ways to get those who need the training, the transportation into the industrial park, we've already got, we've got it resolved for them getting to the job after the fact. So that, that was a strong indicator for us that that's, that's where it needed to be. And we also thought about the needs of our existing employers, right? We want to, we want to serve Coke and Allergan and, you know, these other, other companies that are out in the industrial park, who all have training needs. And what a, what a great way to do that, to have the training center right there. I know at Capstone Forever, we're needing to send people to get more OSHA training or sky, or forklift training, whatever. To have this resource there, to have a schedule of training events going all the time will be a great service to us and the other companies in the district. And as, you know, Chris is trying to attract more businesses and leverage what we have, man, what a, what a great selling proposition to drive those clients through the industrial district and go, oh yeah, and here's our training center for the industrial park and really all of Waco. So anybody else want to add to that?
I'll add to your comments that our, this site we're going to develop in the industrial park is our vision or our dream is it's going to be a multi-building complex. We're talking to you today about building one. We fully intend and hope to have buildings two, three, and four as we identify specific training needs for different industries. And we want to make this, this new training complex have the ability to service industry across the board in lots of different types of, you know, house companies and packaging. So they have people that run equipment. Rick's company is, is mechanical, so they're working with heating and air conditioning and plumbing and things like that. Central Texas Ironworks employs 150 welders. So we're looking for welders. So my hand's up to build a welding complex in this new, in this new center. So our vision is for multi-disciplines, multi-facilities to offer those disciplines.
Thank you, Curtis. So your, your leaders in the community have began these discussions. They've comprised a team met up with fellow organizational leaders, Waco Industrial Foundation, Herman Prosper Waco, Region 12, Workforce Solutions. And that's going to continue to need to expand. Building, finding the programming and the needs of employees is one thing. TSTC can bring that. We can work with these individuals to find out what's needed. Building a facility, we can come together with those resources and build the building. But the key to the, and this is in any community, and this is the one thing that I tap the most on, whether talking to, in regards to Department of Defense grants with Texas A&amp;M or Baylor, anyone else, or with private coalitions. The crux of the success of this will lie in our abilities to connect this to the citizens that we want to take advantage of it. Building it and no one coming is not going to help. And so reaching out through the other chambers of commercees, through Prosper Waco's, other organizations where these pipelines and access to the citizens that are needing to upskill or reskill or enter the labor force is going to make this successful or not. So we're going to have to make sure, when we're talking about expanding team members and partners, critical to the success, this is still just phase one, getting the commitments from our leaders that yes, this is important, and we're going to begin solving this problem. The work is going to come building those pathways and being serious about it and intentional. So that's.
We've also, we have vision, I mean, it's not part of this initial piece, but in later phases, engaging high schools with, with more dual credit and CT type training, not replacing Guam, but providing a parallel pathway for other trades that they don't train currently now at Guam. Again, the, the location here is great for that because it's between three of the largest high schools in, in the Waco area, between, you know, Waco High, University and Midway. And Robinson's not too far away either, but it's great location for, for, I think, getting the highest use out of the, the high schools.
I think too, when we talk about, we talk about is industry bought into, because that's going to have to happen. We've done several focus groups and seminars for folks explaining, in the excitement that industry is showing already. It says, when can we get this started? You know, we're ready, we're ready now, and we'll, we'll commit to send people, we'll commit to send funds, we'll commit a lot of things that'll have to happen. And so I, I think from that standpoint, you know, we've got, I think, almost 20 companies already signed up to either participate in our focus groups, participate in the training itself. So we're, we're real excited about that.
Thank you, Hal. So there's a problem, there's a group working on it. It's ready to structure itself even more into these working groups. We'll just be looking for the lean in and the nod from the elected city leaders and the county leaders. So the goal, the pitch, to construct a Central Texas Industrial Training Center in the heart of Waco's industrial sector. We've talked about the mutual benefits of economic development and pathways out of poverty for the citizens. And we want to, and TSTC, you know, we can, we can design and build it with the type of expertise that the community and the, and the employers need to any scale, whether it's credit, non-credit, dual credit. But we want to get this project moving. And so we began a pilot program. And these gentlemen worked us out a deal with Region 12 to borrow some of their space. It's very, it's small, but it can get some progress going. And so what we've, we've looked at the initial needs of the workforce and what their greatest concerns were is industrial systems. And so we've ramped up a temporary launch out there at the Region 12 off of Bagby that we will launch later in March. And Adam Barber is our, is our local executive of workforce training and the manager of this project. And he has already been reaching out and getting some companies interested, built the training, working on the lease with Region 12. We want to thank Dr. Jerry Mays and his staff out there for their willingness to step in and find us a temporary solution. So Adam, if you want to give a, a small brief on the, or on the pilot?
Sure. And I would just start by echoing what Hal said. As, as this idea has kind of developed, we want to make sure that, you know, we were building a program that was relevant, that was in demand from industry. And we've, we've surveyed those folks recently, and we've gotten a decent response for the, for the pilot. We feel confident that, you know, initially in March, we've got around 50 folks, incumbent trainees from various industry partners, ready to go. And I think that number will continue to grow. And then we'll, we'll turn our sights towards, you know, meeting their further demands. As Jeff said, this is kind of the, you know, the target program. And we've developed it, as you can see, to be eight to 12-week sessions. You know, that's kind of the full, the full session, that's every session, that's, that's about seven modules. We will have the ability to break that down. If someone just wants, you know, one piece of that, then we can break that down into weekly segments, which will be about 40 hours to 48 hours, depending on which module. So, and then, you know, we've gotten further response from industry that says, hey, we need, you know, forklift training or OSHA, as Rick mentioned. And we'll continue to meet those needs, you know, as we get those. So we feel confident about the direction we're headed.
Thank you, Adam, great work. This is one of our best programs statewide. It's kind of a jack of all trades, teaches a little bit of everything. And so it's obviously in very high demand. On this pilot, thank you Curtis and our chancellor, Mike Reiser. We are fronting the cost of the pilots on, on us. We're recovering the lease with Region 12, they're still finalizing that lease. The equipment for the pilots will be about a half million dollars. And then the operations itself, the staff, the training, the consumables, about $100,000. So we're, we're happy to invest that in this effort in the community. Onto the long-term vision is to launch a Central Texas Industrial Training Center, beginning in fall of 2023. I can't, can't fix my alignment, how I came up on this, on this overhead, but that's okay. We wanted to, again, we're, we're custom building here, we're building to your spec, to the local spec. This is the, kind of the, where we would begin from a programmatic perspective, with non-credit certifications, multi-certification programs, micro credentials, everything from, from eight-week mini boot camps all the way to certificate programs, whatever the actual employer needs, we can build in our stackable micro credential job pathways. And we wanted to give you an idea of what the return value is on those that would be taking the programs. These are average starting salaries from two years ago. Our date is a little in the lag as we measure the success of our graduates and completers.
Our people at that rate.
No question, no question. So that's a little bit of the overview of the program. It's going to be very dynamic and fluid. We can change, we can plug and play. We just wanted to give you a sense of what kind of, it's heavy industrial, you know, that's not commonly offered. Heavy industrial training is, is not commonly offered because it's expensive and it's capital intensive. And that's why, and a lot of education is not incentivized on that type of return value like TSTC is. Where we get paid on the placement and the salaries, they're incentivized on contact hours. And so it prohibits them from doing heavy industrial training. And that's why there's a gap there. So here we begin, here's what the needs are looking on from a capital perspective. We're looking at roughly, and this is going to be, all be variable, depending on what the type of capital that's required, or received or committed to. And depending, y'all know the construction economy is pretty crazy and volatile right now. That's why I put a very healthy range up there from 30,000 to 60,000 square foot. It will depend on what some of, we're, we're getting bids around the state on other projects anywhere from 300 to 600. And so we're not sure what that would happen, but pre-designed planning would need to begin happening yesterday. We're going to go fall of '23. The other variable is the cost of equipment. We're going to be looking for local industry, for, there may be $2 to $3 million worth of equipment need. It's a multipurpose facility that we can re, that we can design and redesign. But the, I'll let Curtis talk through a little bit of this, of the financial requirements on the program.
One thing I want to point out and share with you is that this project will be financed locally by Waco institutions. It will be constructed by local contractors. And so this is a, this is a Waco effort. For a proposed $23 million building, 85% financing would be about a $3 million down payment. And we've, we've approached the county commissioners court, asking for a million dollars. TSTC has committed a million dollars. And we're here today to ask the city to have a million dollar commitment for the down payment. The, the permanent financing, depending on, you know, interest rates and Bradley brought up a really good point earlier. We need to get rolling on this to get a good interest rate tied down on this project. So, you know, 15 to 20 years of amortization on the project. We're asking the, the city and the county to cover that debt amortization. TSTC is committing to cover all the operations and all the maintenance during that 15 to 20 years. And so that's, that's a million dollar a year commitment from TSTC. So TSTC is bringing an additional 15 to 20 million dollars to this project for the operations and the maintenance. We need to interview architects now in order to have this open in the fall of 2023. TSTC, through the TSTC Foundation, is committed and prepared to start that. TSTC, through the TSTC Foundation, is committed and prepared to start that process as soon as we have everybody on board to go forward with this. We're ready. We're excited about the project, and we just want to get it going.
Thank you, and great segue, Curtis. This is what going, get it going looks like. Phase one, as we discussed, will be launching on March twenty-one, next month. We'll continue those ongoing academies through the completion of the, if if we all agree to go that direction. Funding commitments would need to start, as they, as as Curtis and Bradley said, as soon as possible, with the tentative open in the fall of twenty-three. That concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to address any questions.
Guys, thanks for being here today. TSTC is such a great institution in our state, and it is such a, creates so much financial mobility and security in our communities by offering, throughout the state, by offering affordable education, something that seems to be harder to come by, and ensures people get wages that are going to keep them in financial security. So thank you to TSTC for what, what a cool service you provide to the members of our state. And it's, I'm proud that our flagship is here in the city of Waco, I mean, your commitment to Waco. What I love about this program is it's bringing the ability, TSTC's knowledge and ability and acumen to train well into our community. And I'm really excited about about that. And Curtis, thank you for, you know, again, what an honor to have a Waco in, serving as the board chair of this statewide organization or entity. One question I had is who will pay for this in the pilot program? And the, and you might have said it and I missed it. And by that, I mean, does the student contribute in fees? And and eventually, for the the kind of next iteration, how do you see that working out?
Yes, that is a, that will be as equally important as finding and building the pathways to get the students into the program as the financing of it. That's one of our national policy issues, is there's not a a Pell Grant or Title IV funding for non-traditional types of training. We owe a funding through Workforce Solutions, Workforce Solutions would be one of those entities. All of these programs would be in the high-demand occupational codes, and so there would be a, an access to those types of funds. But we will also, as much as we'll need to create a recruiting effort, we need to begin with some of our foundations and other community organizations building scholarship. The the fees will range anywhere from six hundred dollars to four thousand, which would be from a micro credential, one competency, one skill, all the way to a certificate. The, the, the basic entry will get you the entry-level job, and you can get all the way up to the higher-paying jobs. So there's a, there's a range. But as you mentioned, Mayor, it's a very affordable range when you're talking about the cost of education in our country. But still, the reality is, it's still out of reach of many of those that we're intending to try to reach. So we're going to have to do a lot of hard work on that.
Great. I, I, I think this, you know, one of the things that softs for us, we've brought these jobs, several jobs, many jobs, as that illustrated into Waco, that are paying higher wages than what we've seen, and are livable wages. And, but yet, at the same time, we're seeing this gap between our population and those jobs. And I, we just, it's interesting because we just had a, a housing study that came out, and I think it said less than a third of Wacoans make, sorry, a third of Wacoans make less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I, I think that that is a little outdated, but it's illustrative of where we are as a city. And so I, I get excited about this because I see a program, programming like this, meeting that need, that identified need in our community of connecting people to higher-earning opportunities. One of the questions I had too was, how, do you know how many certifications per year at full buildout you could anticipate? What's on, what's possible?
That's a great question. We try to speculate. We could run anywhere from, and it depends. It depends how big we want to build it, the types of program, and we decide ultimately that we want to have into it. It depends how many people that we can engage and connect with it. But anywhere from a thousand certifications a year on up. I mean, it's a, not avoiding your question, there's just a lot of variables to the question. But we can scale it and build it to whatever it is that you're able to afford to help build and plan for, and however many that we can actually go and connect with it. We'll build whatever's left in between. And if we need to scale that, we'll continue to scale it. Because if you run out of room, it's a, a self-licking ice cream cone. It will continue to create the impact in the community, in the revenues for the operations, so we can continue to scale it to whatever the needs and the and success that we have on this project.
So this, in this, in this pilot program, it's incumbent workers, so it's people already working in industry. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's, metaphorically, that's the first hole in the bucket.
Okay. And the goal would be to get them upscale, they're, they're, they're working already, but get them upskilled and have a higher-earning opportunity?
Higher earnings for the underemployed, which creates more opportunities in the entry-level jobs, which is where you're going to want to get your unemployed or out of the workforce into those positions first and begin to move in a career pathway. So the ultimate goal of the permanent facility is, the plus one is, Rick told us first, that we got to address that five thousand and that two thousand number, not just the incumbent workers. So it's, it works hand in glove.
And I know we've talked a lot about it, by doing this, it'll help Chris attract more businesses, and and we can keep this, this economic success story going. The other thing to think about is, we got to play defense with the companies that we do have, right? It's a highly competitive environment. If one of these companies sees there's a workforce opportunity that, that, you know, we, we've had companies leave here before, you know, because they can't get all the resources they need. So, yeah.
And I think that's where, you know, my hope is that as companies come here too, the, the other thing is I don't want the jobs that we're attracting to only go to people that are moving here. I want our people who might be in financial insecurity to have a pathway to go achieve those higher wages that we have worked hard as a community to bring into our community. And I think that this is one of the many ways, no silver bullets at all, but one of the ways to do that. And my hope is that in this pilot program, you'll be able to capture some of that data that will illustrate that opportunity through this pilot program alone. And I, so the eventual program would be for non-incumbent. And I think that, you know, what I'll be interested to hear is as this kind of team builds out, and I know that, you know, my hope is, you, you mentioned Prosper Waco, and I know they've done a lot of good work at Upskill Waco to go into the community. And I think that partnering with them and our other chambers of commerce is going to be a great way to, and nonprofits here in the community, for the, the next iteration of this, to really come together as a community to figure out the complexities that exist around how to get individuals into the training that can hopefully get them higher-earning jobs and and sustain those jobs. Because I think that while there are many complexities around that, this is one of the ways, I think, that hopefully could get us there to building a more financially secure community. And I look forward to seeing that, that team continue to get built out. And I look forward to really seeing what the outcomes of something like this could mean as, as we really try to make Waco a more financially secure place. I'd be remiss if I didn't give Edekir Padia a shout out. I know that he worked hard on this before he, he transitioned on. So thankful for his work on this as well. So I look forward to seeing this pilot program come to be and appreciate the work that has been done to date on this effort, because I do think it's going to help us achieve some of our community goals.
Mayor, the, the reason that we know this is going to work, Rick and I were instrumental in in opening Guam eight years ago. The graduates from Guam that go to work, we're lifting those children out of poverty. They have skills when they get out of Guam to to earn a wage that'll lift them out of poverty. So we know this will work. So that's, that's kind of been our model that we've been, we've all been talking about. We, we made it work at Guam, so we know we're going to make this work.
Sure.
Holmes over here, just making a quick comment. I'm happy that TSTC has taken a, a lead on this, on this program. But I'm, I'm really happy to see our business leadership, Mr. Whittaker, Mr. Tolles, and Mr. Cleveland. Your validation of this business thesis, I think, lends a lot of credibility because you're out there every day trying to find people to work, trying to train people, trying to, trying to make Waco a better place to be. And we're seeing this gap. And economic development's a big objective of of me and this council, so bringing better-paying jobs to Waco, and not just for the unemployed, but also the underemployed, which I think this whole program is sort of pointing toward. And we need to, to continue to attract businesses here, Chris, as, we can't, we have to have a workforce. We can't build it and they will come. We have to have some, some people here. We can't have Toyota moving in here with, you know, five thousand people. We just don't have enough workers. So I think any program we can get in place to, to, to initiate this kind of training for, for an industrial center that we're talking about, I think this has all kinds of benefits, short-term and long-term. And I, I like that graph that we showed about the, the mismatch of those middle skills, where that's kind of, that's what we're trying to fix here. And again, I think it has long-term benefits. It's very timely, first of all. And second of all, I hadn't really thought about the, the location and that site, but I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, that's where this new wave of, of companies that are moving in are kind of moving into that area. That's where Amazon is, and Uzunuts is in that neighborhood, and Vasees, and a lot of other, and it's very close to the existing Imperial Drive Industrial Center already. So I, I like that and and that, and I didn't think about that, Rick, when you said it may be a transportation issue, but if it is an issue, we got to solve that, not just for this training, but for the, for the employment in general, for people to, to be able to get to that site easier. So I think that's a challenge you're kind of throwing at us a little bit, and I, I embrace and accept that challenge because I, I think, I think you're absolutely right.
And, and, and if I may too, I think Waco Transit probably, that, you know, we need to be having conversations around that.
Yes.
So we look forward to participating in that conversation.
And I'm excited about trying to figure out how we, how we get this thing done, guys. And, and again, appreciate you giving it some life here and some, and a model, and let's, let's figure out how to, how to make it work. I know there's some, there'll be some challenges on the finance part of it. I guess that's always that way, but we'll, we'll do everything we can to figure it out. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. What I appreciate about this council is we all have very different vocational backgrounds that we're speaking from. So when I'm listening to this presentation, having managed federal case management programs, I'm thinking about all of the other systems that come into place. So transportation, like Mayor Meek said, childcare is something that I didn't hear addressed, but I think is a crucial piece. I consistently hear from parents of young children in our community talking about the desert that is childcare in Waco. I know it's a best practice, especially in a lot of these workforce programs, to have childcare on-site. So I'd be curious if that's something that you guys would consider. I know that having stipends can be a huge game changer in this area too. And so getting creative on how do we not only pay for the six hundred dollar to four thousand dollar fee, but how do we even go above and beyond and replace some of those wages that people are going to lose as they're doing some of the Upskill pieces? The, the partnership piece is exciting. I would encourage reaching out to people like communities and schools that has our WeO grant locally, people like Jesus Said Love, The Cove, entities that are consistently interfacing with high school students and young adults as they're going from financial insecurity into a place of financial stability. Two other thoughts, we deeply care about language equity and accessibility as a council, and would love to hear how y'all are thinking about accessibility from a language standpoint for our language, for our Spanish language folks, how people with disabilities can play into this component. And then the last piece that I think ties into that is all things recruiting, marketing, outreach. We are constantly pushing our staff to figure out how can we really meet people where they're at. And one of the things I consistently hear from nonprofit entities in Waco is we have so many resources, but we are not great about connecting people to one another. And so how do we get this information into the hands of our families, into the hands of our students, into the hands of young people that are representing households that are making under twenty-five thousand dollars a year? I was even thinking, like, a lot of the, a lot of these high-paying roles that you named, we tend to have gender associations with. You know, we think of like a male welder or a male plumber. Like, how can we get into elementary schools and tell little girls in Waco ISD, this is an incredible job that you can have, that you can use your body and you can use your brain, and you can have this incredible salary that you can support yourself or your future family with. So each, each of those pieces are things that I know I would love to continue being a part of the conversation with, and I imagine the rest of our council would as well. But I'm thrilled at this. I think this is exciting. You definitely have my support.
You've also got my support. This is a great, great program, great collaboration. Appreciate industry, TSTC, our economic development team. This seems like, we've, we've had an incredible amount of success in the last five years with economic development, especially the last few here. And as you said, you know, we don't want to lose this, and we want to keep this going. And we want to make sure that these, as the mayor said, these jobs benefit our Waco McLennan County residents. And this seems like a, a program that's tailored to the job market. And as long as we can find ways to connect it to our workforce, this seems like a huge win for our community. So thank you all.
I am also very excited about this, this program, obviously. I think it's something that's been needed here in Waco for quite some time. And I'm glad that y'all have taken the initiative and stepped forward and, and are going to help us get this done. I know this council is very interested in making sure that we make livable wages for our folks. And one thing that I really wanted to stress is that we need to make sure that folks know this is not just for high school students. These are for our workers. These are people that are working and people that are not working. And I know there's a lot of companies that send their workers out of town to learn some of these things and get upgraded in their positions. And they come home with their certificates, but the company pays for them to do that. And that's something we might think about as well. But I'm excited about this. And I want to make sure that we make sure that the information gets out there, that this is not just for high school students. Yes, high school students are welcome, very much so. But we also want to know and let everyone else know that other folks are more than welcome to, to come on board and and learn. This is an opportunity for every working person in Waco to take advantage of if they want to. And we certainly want to make that available for them. I'm very supportive of this. We're always spending money on this and that and this other, and I think this is something that I'm really excited about spending money on. So you have my support on this.
Thank you all for this presentation. When I got back here in two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, one of the things that I kept hearing was the middle skills gap, the middle skills gap. But there were no solutions presented in how we close said middle skills gap. And that was frustrating. It was frustrating to say what we couldn't do and what we didn't have, but no one was offering solutions. I'm pleased in this, in seeing a solution, a solution that not only incorporates our assets, something that we have, we don't have to go out and find because we have it, and and Waco has done a tremendous job in developing what that is and look like. But it's speaking specifically to our people and how we move forward with them. A lot of times when we're trying to figure out the, the global answers to our local problem, we have a tendency to not look granularly at who we're dealing with. I think this specifically addresses that. Councilmember Rodriguez said something that is resonated in that it's not just for high school students or young people. I went, I graduated from Conlon High School, so TSTC, TSTI, however old you are. It was a part of my everyday existence. So I understood that everybody who was not on a four-year education trajectory still had opportunity because it was right there. We saw it every day. And the part that, that I guess pleases me in, in this part of my life, in that we have worked so hard to bring, you know, well-paying jobs into our community, because that's what, you know, if you, the Waco flight is, if you're, you know, raised up here, where do you go? How do you advance and get the lifestyle that you want to have, that you see in other cities, larger cities, but get that here? Well, we, we've kind of been working on that and addressing what living wage looks like and feels like for our people. However, However, there's a gap still. And what I understand in this project and that, that, I mean, we all realize is that you meet people where they are. You know, we have placed these advancing industry in the industrial park. And it makes sense to have training facilities on site so that, you know, I can go outside my door, walk across the street and you can go and get this training or certification program or this or that or that. Now, what I want to see and as we, and, and I am supportive of this, by the way, I want to see as we advance is how that circles full back to TSTC because I don't want it to be an if-then thing. And I don't think it is. I think that if we go with these immediate certifications here because of this job, that could advance to a lot more long-term, something that will be at the home campuses. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, all these programs will crosswalk and matriculate back and forth as needed. We, we will leverage that asset for this project.
See, that's the part that I also want to be as known as the fact that this is here, is that this is just the beginning for these people who may be, you know, new pa, new career paths. As we realize in these past two years, you can pretty much do whatever you want to. And I may be switching jobs because, you know, where I've been in all this time, I don't want to be anymore. And this is the beginning part, you know, coming immediately next month to this training facility. But then in a year from now, you know what? There's a more advanced and a deeper coursework and, and, and career path plan that is at TSTC's main campus in Waco that I can go to and continue on this path. So I just want to make sure that, that as we sell it, we're to any and all, that's our businesses, that's, that we're incentiv, that are here, that we're incentivizing, that you have a greater opportunity, not only just to get this part, but to grow and grow. And as you grow and your company grows, your people will grow and have the ability to grow with you. So that's the part that, that I think takes me where I want to be in this.
You just articulated the future of TSTC's educational model. And I won't get into educational talk with all these professors up here. But we are building stackable, job-related pathways for non-credit and non-credit. Everywhere from the entry-level job all the way up to the most advanced career in that field that actually crosswalks horizontally into other vertical pathways and other career professions based on a skill and competency model that's built for specifically the non-traditional student and done in a non-traditional competency-based modality. And so we are building exactly what you just suggested, that you thought was critical. And Ms. Palmer, young ladies are our best welders today.
One of the other things that's important, especially in this pilot project, is that pilot project was designed by industry. It was said, these are the things that if, if there's something we need today, this is it. And so we feel that's critically important because we need to make that pilot project successful. So industry will continue to use it going forward.
And we're not training people for something where there's no jobs in this community. That's great. Thanks, all. Thank you for being here. This is really exciting. We're thrilled to see it progress.
Thank you.
Council, our last work session of the afternoon is Work Session 2022-079. We've got Anisha Hudnall coming up to the mic. This is a discussion of requests for resolutions of support for proposed developments applying for inclusion in the low-income housing tax credit program administered by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Anisha is going to provide this as a follow-up from our February 8 budget and audit meeting. Anisha?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In today's presentation, I'll be going over the low-income tax credit program through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This presentation will outline two requests for resolution of support and details regarding each project. I do have one developer in the audience and she's with Palladium. And so she's here to answer any questions. I will also be discussing Waco Latte Policy Overview: Affordable Housing Versus Market Rate Housing, the Federal Affordability Requirements, Current and Proposed Latte Properties, projects request for support, the housing plan, recommendations, next steps, and if you have any questions. The city of Waco established a Latte policy to ensure more residents have access to quality affordable housing, a good mix of affordable to market rate units, and the opportunity for community residents to have input and decisions made for their neighborhoods. Applicants were required to meet the following criterias for resolution of support. A minimum of 85% to 15% affordable market rate units, a minimum of five units set aside for the housing authority, construction compatible with the existing neighborhood, a minimum of two public hearings within the proposed neighborhood, and a taxable real estate. What is the difference between affordable housing and market rate housing? By definition, affordable housing is housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of their gross income for housing costs, including utilities. For example, for the purpose of units that will be considered as affordable in this presentation, a person at 30% of the AMI with an income of $13,150 could only afford $328.75 for housing costs. By definition, market rate housing is units within a project to be rented to a household without restrictions as to income levels or rental rate. There are units available for those, these are units available for those at higher income limits and assist in meeting the city's policy criteria. Federal affordability requirements must be met by developers when they are awarded for tax credit. Some of the requirements include the following. 40% of units at rents based on 60% AMI or 20% of the units rents based on 50% AMI. Project must remain affordable for at least 30 years and can ha, and can receive tax credits on units at or below 80% and the unit average cannot be greater than 60%. The city of Waco currently has 17 Latte projects, of which six are in the, currently in the development phase. This includes four senior developments and one supportive housing for veterans. There are two requests for resolution of support. The first is Etch A Residence and the developer is Waco Enclave LP. You may remember this being enclave, my apologies, enclave, but the name has changed. The project is located at 2600 Lakeshore Drive. The development proposes a total of 88 units, of which 74 are affordable and 14 on market rate. The estimated amount for the project cost is $19 million. Waco Enclave LP portfolio contains 1,400 units, including Red Oak Apartments, a 2003 tax credit allocation located in Waco. The developer received two letters of support from New Life Alliance and the Shepherd's Heart. Here are some proposed renderings for the project. Etch A Residence will consist of one, two, and three-bedroom four plans and a full perimeter fencing. Here's a map that identifies the location of the project. The project is a market type C, meaning the location has the highest access to job centers for residents in these neighborhoods. They also enjoy high levels of access to public transportation and average health equity. The property is currently zone O3 and will need to be rezoned to either R3C or O2. The second request is Waco South New Road and the developer is Waco South New Road LTD. The project is located at 3200 South New Road. The develop, development proposes a total of 132 units, of which 84 are affordable and 48 are market rate. The estimated amount for the project is $29 million. The developer has over 4,500 market rate and workforce housing units for families and seniors in the state of Texas. This will require no zoning change. And the developer received three letters of support from Salvation Army, Heart of Texas Central, Texas Independent Living Center, and Neighbor Works of America. The development will offer one, two, and three bedrooms with a resort-style pool and children's playground. It will also include a fitness and business center and children's playroom. The units will be equipped with energy efficiency appliances and LED lighting as well as sustainable building materials. Here's a map that indicates the location of the project. The project is located in market type D, meaning the location has high levels of access to public transit, the highest access to job centers, and above average health equity. And as I stated before, this requires no zoning change. How does this support the housing plan? If both projects were approved at 9% tax credit, it would add additional affordable units in the city of Waco. This will assist in reducing the gap of mixed-match housing for lower-income groups. It also provides additional units to families and as a result, will increase the diversity of housing in our community. And it also has a good mix of market rate units, which will aid in the mixed-income development initiative and add new jobs to the city of Waco. Today's recommendation is to move to approve a resolution of support if council agrees and support the projects for the following developers. Waco Enclave LP and Waco South New Road LTD. If council agrees and supports the projects, there will be two resolutions of support on tonight's agenda for your approval. Upon approval, the developer will submit an application in March and await approval in July of 2022 of the award. If awarded the 9% tax credit, the developer will go through the city of Waco's development process and enter an agreement for fee waivers. The construction, excuse me, the construction should begin sometime in 2023. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Anisha?
I, I have one and I think you, you mentioned it, but you did it so fast, I didn't, I didn't get. You said something about for the South New Road, about the seniors, are there apartments there for seniors? I think you said something about seniors.
So I was talking about what we have within the city of Waco. We have 17 Latte properties and of those, we have four senior developments. I think that's what I was mentioning.
Okay, so, so in particular, this South New Road.
It's a family development.
Do they have apartments for seniors? That's my question, I guess. I can just come right out.
They have done senior development before, but this one is not a senior development.
That's not what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
Do they have apartments within the project for seniors? I thought you mentioned something about seniors. That's why, but you did it so fast, I, I didn't grasp it right. So that's why I'm asking, did you say that?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Anisha.
Thank you.
And I believe that we have one more work session. Is that right?
Oh, that's right. Save the best for last. Sorry, Clint. Normally when I appear over to the mayor, I'm giving him a hard time because it's his turn to talk and this time he caught me. So, Mayor, the next work session is Clint Peters. He's going to go over our public hearings. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We do have the four public hearings. This meeting, the first of them are their subdivision plats. We have three subdivision plats. The first one is Lake Ridge Estates Edition Lots 1 through 10 Block 1. This is in our ETJ, out in the Lorena area of our ETJ, off of Spring Valley Road in the end of Chapel. This will be 10 single-family lots all over an acre off of the existing Chapel Road. They are served by a spring valley water system that has an existing service there. They will be, the, the back portion, there will be an upcoming subdivision off that Lot 11 that you'll see in a couple of months. The next one is Final Plating Construction Plans of Liberty Oaks Edition. This is insider city limits in the China Spring area off of China Spring Road and Washington Lane. Forty-seven lots raising, ranging in size from about 8,700 square feet to 16,000 square feet, all single-family. They are going to have to improve part of Washington Lane with sidewalk. And you can see at larger lot, there'll be a detention pond. And then the last one is another one in our China Spring area of our city limits, the Preserve at Boski Bend Edition Phase 3. This is another single-family residential subdivision. This is the third of four phases, right on the north portion of our lake on North River Crossing Road. These are larger lots, ranging in size from just under a half acre up to 1.8 acres. And it's that brownish color, the middle there. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of all three of these subdivision plats. The next public hearing, 83.
Are these in the impact, are we starting to create impact fees now on these? Turn member is the final approval of the plat or the initial, are these subject to?
So the Liberty Oaks, the, the way the impact fees, you know, we have a phased-in approach. And it's based on when your preliminary plat was approved. And so Liberty Oaks preliminary plat came in after the impact fee. So it will be subject to the full impact fee ordinance. The other, Lake Ridge is outsider city limits and it doesn't have any city utilities, so it's not subject to impact fees. And then Preserve at Boski Bend did have an approved preliminary plat before the effective date of the impact fee ordinance. And so there's a two-year window where they're exempt up to June 1st, 2023.
A little bit different bucket. It's great. Thanks.
Sure. The next public hearing is a request by JRE Golf Carts LLC for the sale, rental, parts, repair, and storage of recreational vehicles, in this case for golf carts in M2 zoning district on property located at 1900 West Loop 340. This is the old Landscape Supply Facility that moved out across the lake that they are wanting to lease out. It's next to Holt Cat Dealership. And then in that area where you have a lot of auto dealerships and similar uses. This is M2 zoning and you do have some PUD zoning in that area as well as for the dealerships. And so they are leasing out the front part of it. This is a company called Mission Golf Carts and they're out of San Antonio and they do full golf cart dealership functions. And here's the site. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this one. We did add two conditions specific to this development. One is that any repair, golf cart repair be inside the building. And then any storage of carts that are in this repair need to be either inside the building or inside a screened area. And they're okay with both of those conditions. No feedback on the 10 carts we mailed out and Plan Commission recommended approval by vote of 11-0.
Clint, do we and our golf course still sell, do we sell and rent golf courses, golf cars? And do we repair them? Or do, or, I mean?
My, my understanding is no, they're just, you rent them to play golf, but not outside. That's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is 84. This is a zone change at a property located at 1418 Spade Avenue from R2 to R3C. This is a single lot located along Spade between 14th and 15th Street, kind of in that area, transition area away from Baylor, near Commercial, where you have V-Tacs and Cups Restaurants, the next couple of blocks. This is in the medium-density land use. Again, as you get away from campus where you have higher-density land use, you have this area between 12th and 17th where it's more medium-density and where you have a mix of apartments and smaller duplexes and whatnot. And then as you get further out past 17th, it, it transitions over to lower-density residential. So this is in that medium-density and R3C is a medium-density zoning district, allows up to 25 units an acre. And you can see on the map, the, it's a mix along Spade. You do have a And you can see on the map, the, it's a mix along Spade, you do have a mix of zoning, the majority of it is multifamily, you do have some commercial office as well.
Clint, with, with this new zoning, under the current zoning, you could not allow an STR, but under the proposed zoning you could, is that correct?
So, under the existing R2 zoning, you could, you could have an STR Type 2. This property is not within a 500-foot buffer of any other licensed STR, so it would be available and then, as well as the proposed zoning, so from an STR standpoint, it's, it doesn't change anything.
We need a term for that, like STR neutral or something.
Yeah. So here's the site, it's the vacant lot, this is looking, and then looking back towards I-35, you can see where it transitions to more commercial uses and then back looking towards Baylor where you have, you can see a mix of apartments as well. With the size of this lot and the proposed density in the R3C, it would allow up to a four-unit complex on that property. We did mail out 35 notices and had zero returned on this one and Plan Commission did recommend approval of it by vote of 10 to 0 with one abstention. And then our last zoning change request is at 804 Cherry Street. I did want to mention before we start this one that council members, Border Reed and Palmer are disqualified from this public hearing due to Baylor Owen property within 200 feet. This is a request from R1B to R2 zoning and this is in our Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association in Council District 1. This is in that area along Cherry between East Clay and Calhoun, just north of Orchard and east of Interstate 35. It is a area dominated by single-family residences and vacant lots. This property is a vacant lot, but you do have numerous single-family homes surrounding it. It is in our urban residential land use and then you can see the dominant zoning in that area is single-family zoning. The difference between R1B and R2 uses would be this would open it up for a potential for a short terminal Type 2 and then currently they could be, build a single-family home on it and with the proposed zoning, you could build up to a duplex on it. Here, here's the picture of the lot, again, a vacant lot, but you can see the homes surrounding it, looking down Cherry at the adjacent lots and then back towards Orchard. Both staff and Plan Commission did recommend disapproval of the request based on its incompatibility with the surrounding area. It was a somewhat of a split vote of 7 to 4 from the Plan Commission, but due to their vote, it will require a supermajority vote from the council to approve of the qualified members, which would be three out of the four. That's it.
Thanks Clint. Any questions for staff on this? All right, are there any future agenda items? We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by our interim city secretary at 4:53 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Number one, attorney briefings under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, Senate Bill 1827, passed in the 87th regular session of the Texas Legislature, state of Texas, and the Texas Political Subdivision, OPIYARD, Abatement Fund Council, and the Settlement Allocation Term Sheet. Number two, real property under Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Number three, economic development under Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, and personnel under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. Municipal Judge Christopher Taylor. We will now go into executive session.